Here we stand, six days shy of being at a 10-month mark since we first had a school closure last spring. I know that sounds hard to believe because at that time, we thought this was going to be a short-term thing. It certainly has not been, and I think we're all coming to the realization that we are in this for the long haul. And so, many of my comments tonight, I'm going to try to put in context of kind of where we were, and how, and what we've learned, and how we're looking at things, you know, 10 months in, we've certainly learned a lot. So tonight, I just wanted to provide an update related to the planned transition to hybrid learning, and answer any questions, and discuss the next steps. As always, we continue with the emphasis on ensuring a safe and secure learning and working conditions for our staff and students, following the guidance that is being provided to us. We are ensuring that we are being responsive to changing conditions, and those have changed a great deal over time. And we're doing everything we possibly can to meet the instruction and support needs for our kids, whether it be remote, hybrid, or both. And it's certainly a lot that we're, we're charged with, and that we are, we've put upon our school staff's shoulders to ensure that that is done, and put upon our family's shoulders to support as well. And ensuring that we're keeping the lens of every learner, every day, with our core belief of equity, and then putting the resources where we believe that they can best support our students. So, we celebrated a new year. We are all hopeful and optimistic that 2021 will, will bring new, new opportunities, new chances, 365 new chances in the days ahead. We hopefully, certainly hope that it's a brighter year. But we are also realistic, and we know that we still have challenges that lay ahead. We remain in the period of full remote learning, and we are in the position of getting ready and moving forward with our planning to move and begin a slow, gradual, intentional transition to onsite learning in a hybrid model. And we're going to speak to that a little bit later in the presentation. I do have staff on the, the virtual meeting that will be able to support the later portions of the presentation, or any questions that you may have, as we discuss kind of the, the path that we've taken and where we are headed next. So this timeline has been shared and modified multiple times. And what we are looking at now is our planned transition to hybrid learning, which would bring school staff onsite who are supporting the first transition. They would come back this week. And then our first transition of students would be on January 19th with pre-K, K1, 6, and 12. I'm going to speak to that a little bit later. And as you can see, if you can't read all of the writing, this is available online, and this continues to be modified and made accessible around the clock. But we are being very gradual with a phased return at each level. Small return at each by grade and by program at each level. The considerations regarding our transition plan to hybrid and/or any future adaptive pauses will always have a site on the level of community transmission, district metrics, as well as our ability to consistently implement key mitigation strategies. And I've shared with you many times exactly what I'm referring to when I talk about mitigation strategies, and I'll provide a kind of a summary again as we start to move a little bit forward down this path. I do want to make the comment that when we first began getting our arms wrapped around the data and the levels of community transmission, we became very focused on certain metrics at the region, county, and ZIP code level, and we continue that focus as well. But we're also now starting to put a different lens and perspective in, in viewing that data as we look on what's happening around and what the impact is inside of the district. We do keep our eyes set on the Illinois Department of Public Health guidance, and there's multiple metrics that they outline that start to give you some signposts of what the level of community transmission is. And we are seeing some stability coming forward with new cases and new youth cases, so that is an encouraging sign. At the Region 7 level, which includes Will County and Kankakee County, we see a seven-day rolling average at 11.1% for this region as of January 8th. We are hopeful, and it's been communicated by Governor Pritzker, that at the end of this week, Region 7, who's currently under Tier 3 mitigations, will see reduced mitigations as long as the metrics are maintained. And this is positivity rate, the ICU and medical surgical bed availability, as well as a decline in the number of hospitalized patients. There was an extended period of monitoring these metrics. Although the region had met these metrics, the mitigations were held in place for that buffer after the holiday season as a proactive strategy that was recommended to hopefully mitigate transmission in the community. So, we're hopeful for our community, for our business community, for some sense of normalcy in life that this is the case, but we're also hopeful that our community remains vigilant in taking precautions so that we don't see any increases in the future. As I alluded to earlier, the Will County metrics, we look at test positivity and new cases per 100,000. Those currently do remain at a substantial level, but we see some strong signs with the new cases and youth cases at a minimal level. And that's an important story to tell. When I said that we're in this for the long haul, I, when I'm having conversations with people, people often act surprised when I talk about next year. And based on everything that I read and absorb and listen to from experts, we will be dealing with this next year. Test positivity is a function of tests, the number of tests that are given. So if we could fast-forward to the fall or the winter of next year, if there's a lower number of tests based on the number of positives, test positivity could remain high for quite some time. So, we may be living in a world with a positivity rate, or in a community with a positivity rate of 10 or 12% for quite some time because it's, it's merely a, a function of the number of tests. And we also have to realize that the concept that schools will not return in any fashion until there is, you know, 0% positivity or no new cases is, is simply not a reality or a reality that I, I believe that our community, our families, or educators would be willing to accept. We may be looking at another full year or more before we see numbers of that nature. And even then, it's a changing game, as COVID has shown itself to be in terms of spread. Or, you know, now we hear news of new variations, new variants, or another strand emerging. And so, it is a constantly moving picture. And so, keeping this in mind when we look at the data and not making our decisions based on any one metric is really critical. When we look at our ZIP code data, that zones us in a little bit further. We are seeing around 11% positivity in our immediate ZIP code areas, and we continue to monitor this as well. Looking at the trend lines over time, since just before Thanksgiving, when we announced the adaptive pause, so that you see on the chart there that says 1116, so that November 16th board meeting, we saw some large, very marked spikes in the positivity rate at the region and county and local level. And since that time, we certainly have seen a decrease. You see the trend lines coming down. We have some movement with the metrics inching back up in some areas as of late, but we do continue to monitor that, and we are certainly in a different place than we were on November 16th. I'm sorry, yes, November 16th. Again, our new cases and our youth cases is important to note because that is starting to paint a different picture as well. So those are important metrics that we look at. We also monitor our internal numbers. Our dashboard is available online. There has been some questions about the immediacy of the updates. It does take a day to update the dashboard from the time that it's reported. So it doesn't instantly go in there the moment that one of our school nurses enters a case. So just for full transparency with the community, those cases are reported and they, they do show in the dashboard. It just takes time for the, the upload to occur. Of course, we saw a decrease. Perhaps it was a decrease in reporting, perhaps it was a decrease in cases. What I can only tell you is it was a decrease in the reported known cases to us. And the known staff positive cases in terms of active cases is 18. Remember, this is out of a staff of more than 2,200 staff. And then the, that's in isolation for positive cases. And then the known student positive cases is 21. Again, that's reported. And so, we certainly encourage our families to also continue to report to us so that we can tell the impact that our families are feeling at a local level in the home, and what that means for our school community. You see the quarantine numbers there as well. And of course, we expected a decrease over time and being full remote, but this is something that we continue to monitor. As we plan for a safe and healthy transition to hybrid learning, we've taken many steps to ensure that we have an awareness of the community metrics around us. And as we're moving into the range of being at a moderate level of community transmission, we'll of course monitor that. And we, most importantly, will monitor the impact that we're seeing with cases as well in the district for staff and students, as well as numbers of quarantine, and being very intentional about our efforts as we're monitoring that. As you saw on the chart earlier, and I'll refer to shortly, we are planning staggered transition by group at each level. These are small groups of students, small numbers of, per classroom, small numbers per building that will come back at any given time, which allows us to be very intentional and measured in implementing safety protocols and helping students adjust, and helping staff adjust, and having teachers have the opportunity to get acclimated in their classrooms without a lot of other students in the, in the building. And so, this will be the first transition that occurs for some of our pre-K learners, our kindergarten and first grade, as well as our sixth grade and 12th grade. Each of our schools has worked very hard and made many, I guess, adoptions and improvements to their building plans for health and safety procedures. We've had the experience of having special programs onsite. We've learned a lot from that. We've learned a lot from other district successes. We do know many districts and many of, that we, which we have visited, that at a moderate level of community transmission, with successful implementation of mitigation strategies, that school transmission is very low to nonexistent when those strategies are in place. And so that is where our emphasis has been placed. Our schools have considered all of the variables with hallways and open spaces, markings, signage, to have organized and safe movement. We have schedules developed for locations for lunch, allowing for adequate distancing, seating, passing periods at middle and high. That's something that's very important that the schools have fought through. And I'm going to give you perspective on what that will look like compared to what we would typically expect to see in a middle school or high school passing period with full hallways full of students. Arrival and dismissal is another area that school teams have thought about very carefully for safety. Furniture in classrooms, the considerations for safe distancing, six-feet distancing, and all other safety procedures. All students and staff will receive a review of protocols and safety guidelines, and it will take time to adjust. We do know that we've, we've learned a lot, like I said, from our previous experience and from other districts as well. And the adaption, once everyone gets acclimated, can be done very successfully to the point where it does become kind of the, the new normal, and our students and staff adapt very well. Allowing time for students to transition and orientation. I know that's one thing that I heard, especially from kindergarten parents or pre-K parents who are sending their little ones in. And the small groups and the, and the small class sizes will essentially have a built-in orientation and a built-in time to transition. Same thing for our sixth graders because they're still our babies, and we still, it's still a big change for them to be coming to middle school for the first time. To provide you perspective on our first transition, which is scheduled to occur on January 19th, I, I mentioned early childhood, kindergarten, first, sixth, and special programs. This chart gives you approximate numbers of what you would be looking at by level in each building, an estimation, and then what the classroom size would look like. So, for example, in an elementary building, we may have approximately 13 to 31 kindergarteners coming back. And then our class sizes, you can see in the column to the right, would be approximately four to 14. At middle school, for example, we may have, we have approximately 80 students in sixth grade coming back. Those students spread out amongst classes allows for a small class size at approximately seven to 10 students. And then our high school, you can see even our, with our largest number at Bolingbrook High School with 240 students that would be onsite at a time, spread out amongst that entire big building, spread out amongst classrooms, does allow for adequate safe distancing and small class sizes to allow for distancing in the classroom. And our special programs, who have operated successfully several, couple months ago, they have their own unique programming that of course is small in terms of number of total students onsite and number of students in the classroom. So, after I go through health and safety a little bit further, we are going to talk about each of the levels and what that means for hybrid students, as well as for remote students. Health and safety inside of our schools, as I mentioned before, of course, community transmission is important, and we watch that, but we also know that we can operate successfully. We've learned a great deal from the unknown when we were first taking this on in August. The, the focus really is on our strong ability to implement the five core mitigation strategies recommended by the Centers for Disease Control to lower the risk of transmission in schools. And the schools that have been open successfully so far have strong implementation, and we are fully prepared for this as well. That is consistent and correct usage of face coverings, social distancing to the largest extent possible, regular hand hygiene, respiratory etiquette, and ensuring that we're emphasizing those practices, routine cleaning and disinfection, and contact tracing in collaboration with Will County Health Department. From the unknown that we faced in August or September, we have come light years in terms of our ability to work with our local health department, to have our staff fully trained and comfortable with all of the protocols with contact tracing, and to essentially become very well-versed in public health, something that was not an area that we were really, really deep, deeply involved with previously. The protocols and communication with our local health department are stronger than they ever have been. And in terms of the guidance that's been given us for exclusion, return to school, we have solidly been implementing that and feel very confident that we are able to do so when students transition onsite. Family will receive, families will receive notification on the protocols. They've been shared previously. They're available on our web pages, on the school web pages. Families will receive a reminder mailing prior to their transition. We have health waiting areas in all of our buildings for students who may be exhibiting symptoms and need to go home ill. We have procedures and protocols in place for return to school, which requires an alternative diagnosis or a negative PCR. That's a viral test, viral COVID test that is required of the students to return. And that includes a protocol if there are household members who are infected. We have quarantine and isolation guidelines that are in accordance with Illinois Department of Public Health and CDC guidelines. And we have strong protocols and procedures for contact tracing, including for non-close contacts and close contacts. I won't go into that information tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions, but that information is also available on our website. And like anything, the, the more you become familiar with something, the easier, the more normal it feels or the easier it is to remember that information. And this is a lot, I know that we're communicating to parents. We are currently in the process of establishing partnership with the Will County Health Department to receive point-of-care assessment for screening, an antigen screener for symptomatic students or staff. Of course, that would be by consent and would be just one tool in our, in our arsenal to help us in the contact tracing effort if students are exhibiting symptoms and are onsite. We also have received additional information about vaccine readiness for school staff. So, we have been in regular communication with the Will County Health Department. We will be assisting in any way possible we can for the administration of that vaccine for our school staff who select that as soon as it becomes available. That is something that the effort at the state and county level, they're working very diligently to revise and make that as efficient as possible. Phase 1A is in process. Our school nurses will be getting vaccinated in the upcoming week to two weeks, and we have, school staff will hopefully be shortly after that. I've received many questions related to air quality as studies come out related to the lesser transmission on surfaces, but more so in the air. And I just wanted to reiterate some of the HVAC measures that we have put in place to support air quality and reduce the risk of transmission. This includes the increased outdoor fresh air intake, higher-rated filters, more frequent filter changes, reverse-flow fan filter units, HEPA filtration in the main office areas, nurses' offices, ill rooms, and the use of a disinfectant product in our air handling equipment. Yes, our schools will look different when students are back onsite, but as you can see, they're still our schools. And the desks may be farther apart, and the markings on the floor may be quite prescriptive, and the signage may be more abundant. However, they're all done in the interest of ensuring the, that we're doing everything we possibly can to reduce any risk of transmission inside of our schools. So I just wanted to provide you with a, a quick glimpse at what some of our classrooms or hallways look like and what students could expect when they return to school.
Thank you for that very comprehensive report. And you guys have done an outstanding job with that communication throughout this entire process. There's one thing that, you know, Rachel was talking about the positivity rates. Well, a lot of people don't test because they don't have a reason to, but we have people who are testing who don't necessarily have a reason to. So if you go test, say 100 people who think they have a reason to go test besides their professional requirements, being a nurse, doctor, so on and so forth. If 100 people show up to take the test, and they all think they have some symptoms, that's the reason they go, or, and maybe, let's just say 150 people show up, but 100 test positive, it skews the numbers. And that's part of the reason you see such a higher necessarily positive test rate of people who are testing. Randomly, if you're not having any symptoms and don't have any particular reason to go test, you won't go test. So, if you see the state total of 14 million-plus tests have been conducted, there's only 12.7 million people in the state of Illinois. So they've tested more than 2 million people that, that live here. So obviously, people who are required to be tested because of their professions are getting tested much more often. I personally have not had the test, but my family members have because they had a reason to go get tested. So, there you have it. I, I hope that kind of helps some of those numbers. And we also know that by ZIP code, we look better than some other places, but not as good as others. So it's, it's, you know, it's cyclical, I suppose.
Thank you. I, I did want to see if we have our virtual participants available on the screen. The self-certification information will be sent to our families as a reminder. Wearing the bracelet daily as part of this daily self-symptom screening and self-certification process, or it would be required to be done onsite, will be part of our process. That information will be sent home. There's a lime green card that students will come with on their first day. I do need to access the, can we have the presentation simultaneously shown with the Zoom participants? No, okay. So I, I have slides that I think this is probably the most critical information for parents, just a summary of what each level looks like. Are they able to speak? Yes, okay, so they're able to speak. So that's the information on screening. Our first transition, I've said it multiple times, I'm saying it again, this transition timeline is available. And after today, the school communication will be the most, the most frequent form of communication regarding any upcoming transitions, as well as on social media. Mary Worster, our Executive Director of Student Services, can you please speak to the STEP transition, please?
Good evening. STEP transition program will return onsite on January 19th. In-person learning will occur on Thursday through Friday from 7:15 to 12:30 with a remote Monday. Our full remote model will be a blend of asynchronous and synchronous work with morning and afternoon support time. And then instructional block will run from 8 to 12 for our fully remote STEP students.
Adam Herter, Executive Director of Middle and High Schools. On high school transition, please.
Good evening. For our high school transition, as mentioned earlier, 12th graders will begin onsite first as we stagger the grade levels back into the building. For students who have chosen the full remote model for instruction, they'll be, have full exposure to all their teachers and classes five days a week. For students who have chosen the hybrid model, they'll attend two days a week, on either Tuesday and Thursday, or Wednesday and Friday. For all students, Mondays will be a remote with a shortened schedule, similar to early release days that we've had in the past. And then, the schedule for our high school will be going back to the seven-period schedule. And you can see an example on the screen. Periods last approximately 44, 45 minutes. There is 10 minutes in between each period to allow for students who are joining classes remotely, online, to have a break. Also, to safely transition students throughout the building who are there in person. You'll also note that while the 45-minute timeframe is in the chart for each period, that does not mean that students will be, when they are at home, simply watching a teacher talk on Zoom for 45 minutes straight, multiple times throughout the day. Those class periods will be broken out with teachers using strategies to engage students, give students breaks. Then of course, there are those 10-minute blocks, which add up to almost an hour of breaks during the day. Our next slide, I believe, is the middle school transition. Very similar in terms of the full remote versus hybrid model. Again, students who are full remote in middle school will have access to all of their teachers five days a week remotely. Similar model for hybrid students who are returning. Only differences in middle school being sixth graders will be the initial group of students who, who return. We again have Mondays that are remote with a shortened schedule. Here is, on the screen is an example schedule of what it may look like for a student who returns onsite. In this example, they are a last name A through K, which would mean they return onsite Tuesday and Thursday, and then they would be remote the other three days of the week. In middle school and high school, as has been discussed in the past, students, when they are not onsite, or if they're fully remote, will be using Zoom to engage in classroom instruction with the teacher, which means that teachers will have students in front of them in person, as well as students remotely online. And we appreciate the tremendous efforts that have taken place to prepare teachers for this, for teachers' preparation on their own to get ready to teach in this unique way. While of course, this is not something that really anyone, one of us have done before. We have had the chance to secure additional technology, including cameras, additional monitors to support this instruction, and are engaged in a significant initiative for professional development to support teachers as we continue to learn with this model. But what I will say is that we can be sure that even when students are remote at home and not onsite, they will be able to engage directly in instruction with access to the teacher, asking questions of the teacher, getting feedback from their teacher throughout all of their, their periods in high school and their blocks at the middle school level.
Okay, thank you. Elementary school transition, Dr. Jill Chikalis.
Good evening. Our elementary school plan also has a full remote model and a, a hybrid model. In the full remote model, it will be a continuation of the current model with at-home learning five days a week. There will be a designated remote learning teacher assigned to each grade level, multiple if needed, based on the family, the family's learning selection preferences. There's been an adjustment of class rosters as needed, again, based on the selection of the learning preferences. In our hybrid model, we'll begin on January 19th with kindergarten, first grade, and our special education programs. These students will transition back, similar to the middle school model, where they will be onsite two days a week, Tuesday, Thursday, or Wednesday, Friday. Our self-contained special education programs will be onsite Tuesday through Friday. All students in the hybrid model will experience at-home learning Mondays with the early release time, just like the middle school. The hybrid model offers a blend of onsite learning and at-home learning throughout the quarter, as well as throughout the week. There was also an adjustment of class rosters that will take effect so that when students come back, they will be with their semester two teachers beginning January 19th.
For a summary of our early childhood, Mary Worster, Executive Director of Student Services.
Our early childhood program will continue with a remote model from the start of school and have at-home learning five days a week. Our onsite model will be a phased transition, beginning the week of January 19th with our multi-needs and our stellar students, as well as walk-in speech beginning that. multi-needs in our stellar students, as well as walk-in speech beginning that following week. We would be phasing in our IEP students and blended with multiple services. And that final phase M will be our preschool for all students, preschool for all extended, preschool expansion grant students, tuition, and speech students in our blended learning. Their learning model will be Monday through Thursday with Fridays being the asynchronous day.
Thank you very much. So just in summary, our first transition is highlighted there for January 19th. Of course, we will continue to monitor up until this point, and we will continue, continue to monitor very closely while we transition, while we're on-site, and as we move into that next transition of January 26th. I know for students, for families, and for staff, this will be a huge change requiring a whole lot of effort, a whole lot of hard work, and it will present many challenges. I know that the range of emotions will range from eager and excited to be back to anxious and worried, and, and I know that that's normal for everyone who's experienced a transition for your child or yourself or going back to the workplace. I know that we are also committed, however, to sticking in this together and working through those challenges, to keep the communication lines open, to keep the support open, and to adapt and be flexible. If things aren't working, we will adjust. If conditions change dramatically, we will adjust. Please know that we don't, do not make any of these decisions lightly. We know that the, just the, the task of transitioning to onsite, running hybrid and remote at the same time, or transitioning your little ones who've never been in school before is going to cause a whole huge, huge effort by parents, by staff, by teachers, by everyone involved, our building leaders. But I know we're up for the task, and I know that it's the right thing to do to take small and measured steps in the direction of returning our students on-site. We do not make these decisions lightly, but we will stick in it, stick through it together. You can expect communication coming from your building, your school, respective school or schools. Prior to the transition, you'll receive a health and safety mailing reminder. You should have already received a transportation mailing. If you are a family who has chosen to stay full remote and you received a transportation mailing, that's okay. You can just file that away for, for future use. You do not need it at this time. We do have the ability, if you're concerned about your selection that's registered in the system, you can log into the parent portal to see what that is, if it's listed as remote or hybrid. You will receive an email from your school with additional information prior to the transition, and then we will continue to update you through board meetings and other communication, social media, and the website as well. So again, I know this is a lengthy detailed summary, but it is critical that everyone have an awareness of just how much thought and planning has gone into arriving at this point and how much thought and care will be put forth as we take the next step forward and, and return our students on-site and our staff on-site. So I thank you all for your effort and your partnership. I know it's not an easy ask to make abrupt changes or big changes, but I think we're up for the task, and I am hopeful that we can move forward and build on our successes.